September 11, 2018 meeting of the Woodstock Community Unit District 200 Board of Education. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
You have the roll call please.
Mr. Ferris.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gilmore.
Here.
Mr. Gorlitz.
Here.
Mr. Hobu.
Here.
Mr. Maselli.
Here.
Mr. Parisi.
Here.
Mr. Schinner.
Here.
First item on our agenda tonight is our consent agenda that is in your materials. We also have two addendums. If any board member wishes to pull any item from the consent agenda. If not, please take one to read the consent agenda and when you're ready there is a suggested motion on page 1 of your materials for the board.
Move to waive the reading of and approve the consent agenda as printed in the board agenda, including the September 11, 2018 routine personnel matter addendum and approval of the Northwood Middle School's senior council over a fundraising request for that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Parisi, second by Mr. Gorlitz. Roll call please.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Mr. Gorlitz.
Yes.
Mr. Maselli.
Yes.
Mr. Ferris.
Yes.
Mr. Schinner.
Yes.
Mr. Hobu.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes. Okay, next item on our agenda then is our communications. This is an opportunity for public comments and first thing after the board made comments, we always start with public comments and we start with those who've signed up on our decline sheet. And we have to begin with Major Stevenson from the US Marine Corps.
My name is Robert Stevenson. My address is 2400 East Dillon Avenue, that says 20th Illinois, 60018. Telephone number 702-513-1438. Can you reach that number? And the organization is the United States Marine Corps, basically talking about ESSA. Okay, I am Major Stevenson. I've actually been communicating with Mr. Mohn, we've been talking a couple of phone calls. First of all, I'd like to play my position. I'm a commanding officer for all of the Marine Corps within the Chicago area, so as north as nearly here at Woodstock, all the way down to Chicago Heights, about 247 schools. I'm here, I just talked about what we've been mentioning. First of all, we have a great relationship with the Woodstock Schools District 200. What we do is obviously we put young men and women into the Marine Corps every day to help the services out there and that is our primary position. As you know, the Marine Corps, maybe as you know, maybe not, we actually look about 1% of America, actually enlist them into the Marine Corps. It's larger than for the whole service, but it's a very small portion. Inside the packet in front of you, you see a couple of things. In there, the first thing on your left is ESSA, sorry about my fact for everybody, if you did, I did a copy if you'd like. The second thing in there is that your colleagues later from the Department of Education came down after President Obama signed ESSA into law back in 2015 to 2016. The third thing in that document on the left-hand side is a list payment, so basically the last two years, number of students checked they had in school based on ISVs records compared to the list of articles they've received from the register. And the last thing is just for your information, shows the number of individuals from high school, seniors and graduates that have listed to the Marine Corps out of both schools that are calling District 200. As I said, we have a really strong relationship with Woodstock, physical access is not a problem. We're able to do a lot of the things that the Marine Corps requires, i.e. English setups, just showing up, being part of the school. An issue in the compliance issue, the reason we're here, part of this inside of that, as you read through it and really with clarification with your colleagues later, specifies what type of list are provided, basically the allowance of opt-in and opt-out policies. Specifically with opt-out policies, there's not the ability, there's same access, you cannot opt out of military, you give your information to an institution of higher education, i.e. college. You have to provide information to vote or not, it's very clear as stated in there, and also reinforced by your colleagues later. That's the only issue. The reason we came to this school, because there's about 30 districts out there, is because we look at percentages, basically something below 75% is a trip, basically with a lot of information that doesn't ascertain. Something's under 75%, it's a automatic indicator that there might be a policy that doesn't follow that. So we have about 50 districts to be identified, down to about 30, and a lot of districts just don't realize there not being complaints. So that's the gist of it. Ultimately, we're here on an important day as well as September 11, so it's always nice to see military fire and fire with action. So glad to be at the meeting, glad to be out here. It looks phenomenal, water quality is good. My associate here is actually part of the area that's 30 million from Chicago, and that's the genesis of our feature.
It's my understanding you have been in communication with Dr. Mohn about compliance.
Yes, sir.
And he's been in communication with our attorneys regarding compliance. It's my understanding there is a little bit of disagreement as to what requirements are. I think that's where we're wanting to apply. We've had numerous students who have been in the military, and we want to give that option to the military, to students who wish to do that. I don't know how to resolve that problem.
Yeah, I mean, as a stage to everyone's aware, the Marine Corps are always welcome at both our high schools. The most common visitor to our schools are our forests open, welcome are. If you look at our number of enrollment, probably two or three times the national average, 1%. So I mean, we're contributing students to the Marine Corps, thanks for your service, gentlemen, both of you. And I always said, a point of practice reading is clear, it's not. There's a disagreement in whether, basically, we allow our parents to opt out of providing information to the military, which by law we have to, and then to colleges. And the disagreement between our lawyers, that is something like that, not the counsel is whether or not our lawyer can do that legally, that we can allow parents to opt out of vote. The Marine Corps, understanding the law would be that if you opt out of vote, you're absolutely, our parents couldn't opt out of only Marine Corps information, having to pass off of college information at the same time.
I can just add two things. I agree with your point, sir, and if you just look at ESSA, the excerpt that you brought out there, it does refer to access, like the clarified access.
Exactly.
Whereas the Department of Education letter, which I highlighted specifically in there, talks about access to the list specifically. So access, ESSA gives us no right to access, physically I can only go there as much as a college goes there. I have that same access, but there's no required access. Whereas ESSA and that letter, we talked about the list of what is required, and that's not what you provide to a college, that's across the board, what has to be provided to colleges and military, same access.
And what I'm going to suggest is move forward in the material you provided tonight onto our lawyers, let them review it and figure out about it and see what they say about it. And that's probably what we can do at this point with it.
Yes, sir, yes.
But we appreciate your comment, we appreciate you coming, we do say thank you, I mean, I have to say thank you for your service, particularly on the day line today. Thank you for your service and for coming and addressing us. And if there's anything you need or would like to address against this, we'll be kind of talking about it.
Thank you for the commentary, gentlemen. Have a great day.
Thank you very much, and nice evening. Okay, our next, the next person who is listed is Mr. Nelson. Would you like to address the board at this point?
Yes, sir, thank you. Good evening, I'm Woodstock Mayor Speaker Dill, I'm Todd Nelson, 41 on Hurley Street, resident of Woodstock since 2014, in Henry County since 1991. I'm a vice school advocate, Vice President of the Henry County Vice School Advocates, established in 2008, by the heart of life in Crystal Lake. Just past August, Governor R. R. signed the law from the GACT, 106th, secondly known as the Mike Walk Education Schools Act. It requires the school board to base, full district with name, grade between kindergarten age and adult policy on educating students on the effectiveness of preventing and avoiding traffic injuries related to walking and bicycling, which education must remain available for students in grade 4 through 8. Transportation, whether by foot, bicycle, car, or bus train, is part of the fabric of our lives. It shapes our view of the world, how we approach it, understand its mechanics, appreciate its costs and benefits to the individual, the community, and the world, knowing how to be safe, being confident in it, is vital to our wellbeing. To be effective, transportation, safety education requires an integrated, daily, long-term approach, and through just an hour or two of instruction during the first week of the school year. The act was enacted due to a high incident of kids walking, injury, kids walking bicycling to school, equally significant in its horizon in terms of obesity and the rest. Adult obesity is higher. It is costly, obesity-related health conditions are some of the leading causes of preventable premature death. Obese folks spend 40% more on direct healthcare costs than adults who are healthy weight. There is a connection between the rise of obesity and the lack of understanding and acceptance of bicycling and the overdependence on arm and leg for both the transportation. That is the primary reason for the advocacy of the integration of bicycling, first as an enhancement to the health and physical education curriculum. Eventually bicycling subject matter can be integrated on a multi-disciplinary basis and be extended to after-school, off campus, club, and deeper education. There are solid, well-possessed, tried and true instruction programs, walking and bicycling and after-transportation, readily available for primary school use. Benefits of walking and bicycling are many, participating when integrated into our lives, primary means of local transportation. Traffic signaling instruction is a great way for children to become familiar with the rules of the road, traffic dynamics and being a responsible road user. I have to skip most of that because I don't want to take any more of the time, it's not necessary. That, at any rate, bicycling can lead to health for your lifestyle. I'd like to be able to work together with the school boards, not only improve safety of our children walking bicycling to school, but give them the tools that they can use to help into life. So, any questions now or later? I can provide the contact information to sign on, please. But I can email if anybody wants links to programs I've talked about.
Yeah, we have, before we talk, we have to discuss, we can partner with you.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you. So that's everybody who signed up to address the board, with anyone else, any other members of the public who should address the board at this time. Then we'll move on to the next, to our staff comments. Are there any staff comments at this time? Or comments, any board comments? Okay, and we'll move on to super comments.
Full screen of school year, welcome to cool temperatures in this building specifically. I think it's going in the right direction, but overall, we're only starting the school year with the Florida Great Ball. Number exciting program this year, one that we're incredibly excited about, Dr. Gray started the Abbott program at Millsville. We'll present on that later in the school year, but we're very excited, we have training over the summer with the school staff, their teacher administration, students are all set up implementation of Abbott, a great start to that, and a more information, a program that really reaches out to students in need and gives them a variety of skills and implements different therapies for the next 12 months. We're trying in the Millsville, successful national program, Dr. Gray Stark on Highland Bath, their foundation, grant request we did last week, continues going tomorrow, grand meeting, Wednesday, September 26, 5 p.m. from Spack North, the grand award ceremony. This is a great example of the foundation and truly our entire community and bad horse teams, more members of the local community. 26th of September, Wednesday, 5 p.m. from Spack North. It's about an hour.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda then is the city of Woodstock pressing us on the proposal.
Mr. President, members of the board trustees, Superintendent Mohn, and members of the administrative team, we appreciate so much the opportunity to come before you tonight to talk about a proposal with the city of Woodstock through what the city council is considering regarding a TIF district within the city boundaries of the city of Woodstock, and certainly within the boundaries of the school district. As the board hopefully is aware, the city and the board share a very strong collaborative relationship as we go up the process of working together to meet the needs of our residents and those that we serve in the larger school district as well. We are proud of that collaborative effort and it is within the spirit of that relationship that we are here today to talk to you in an advanced opportunity really about the considerations which city council is undertaking regarding establishment of a tax increment financing district. The board is very much aware of the fact that the city of Woodstock does have a current TIF district, which is about to expire. The term of a district is for 23 years. That district has been in place for 21, and so in two years, that current district is going to expire. The district itself currently is concentrated down in the center parts of the city of Woodstock and surrounding the Woodstock Square, if you will. And of course, we recognize the fact that during the term of this district, there have been some challenges, not the least of which was the economic downturn of 2008. And while the economy is beginning to grow and to move forward, certainly here in the city of Woodstock as well as the larger region, we recognize the fact that the TIF term now has become extremely limited in terms of the remaining years. And so as we look forward to the opportunity for economic growth and development within the community, we considered two different options. The first option was to seek an extension of the current district itself, which the state law allows, would be 13 years. But the reality was that as we began to review the interests and the needs and the potential concerns of the larger community as well as the economy, we realized that we probably need to look beyond what the current boundaries are to a larger, more encompassing district that would focus particularly upon economic growth and development through retail and industrial development. Now, please don't misunderstand, I'm not suggesting that there wouldn't be some residential development in there, but of course, we are cognizant of the fact that it's one of the major concerns that the school board might have as we look to the possibility of bringing more students into the district and the impact that that has on terms of, not only physical facilities, but also personnel. So we are very cognizant of that and certainly want to work with the school board to address the types of housing that might be encompassed within the larger new TIF definition, if you will. But tonight, we want to introduce you to the larger concept so that you may have the chance to become more familiar with that and then ask whatever questions that you might wish to tonight or in the future as we proceed through our consideration of this. Please understand that no decision has been made, we're in the formative process here. We want to ensure you that you have an opportunity to help us to formulate what is in the best interest of the community at large, and certainly what is in the best interest of economic development and you all meeting the needs and responsibilities that you have as the Board of Education here in District 200. With me tonight are staff members, Roscoe Stelford, our City Manager, Paul Christensen, who is our Finance Director and Assistant City Manager, and Garrett, who is going to begin out with the presentation. Garrett Anderson is our Economic Development Director for the city of Woodstock, and so if you are willing at this time, we'll go into the presentation and then we'll move from there. Is that acceptable? All right, thank you all so much. Garrett.
Well, as I said, Mr. Chairman, thank you for being part of the meeting tonight for the movement happening tonight. It's virtually just, let's say, actually been a permanent city district in the state of state. So I'd like to get started, just a few basic things, it'll come up later in the presentation. But as the mayor said, really basic information to start, TIF is, you'll have the slide there in front of you. TIF is used by most of the states around, I suppose most of the communities around us here, depending on the county. It's 20 to the year time span. The area has to qualify, the area that's designated as TIF must qualify either as a lighted area or as a conservation area. There's a dozen or so different criteria that can be used that qualify, light is not really one of the ones that we're using with this particular district, conservation is the one we're using. So it's a little bit different definition. In fact, what we're trying to do is prevent an area that's starting to show signs of deterioration from getting even more deteriorated. We also have to verify that more than half the buildings in the district are over 35 years old, those used for older parts of town that are declining, to try to prevent the additional decline. The primary uses of the TIF funding that is generated is primarily for public infrastructure and for site improvements, and revenue is limited, as you know, to increase in the assessed value and grow property, not the current value, but the increased value. So what can things, what can the TIF funding be used for? Really it's infrastructure and site prep, it's all the soft costs, demolition, those kind of things. What we're trying to do with these sites is where the conditions are present on some sort of an open site, there's an existing building, a dilapidated building, these we torn down, or just a vacant site, usually there's some sort of condition present on that site that's preventing that site from becoming a productive development site. And that's where TIF comes in, to try to overcome whatever hurdles it is that's keeping that site from, you know, being a good location, because generating value for the community. Often there are contaminated sites, or the building that's there is obsolete and it's not feasible for a current project to kind of demolish that building and start over with some new, or the existing building is just so far out of code that bringing it up to date would be, you know, too far, too much of a budget for somebody to tackle. Those are the kind of conditions we're looking at, and in turn it directs those, the potential challenges with TIF to allow development to go there. We've probably seen this type of work before. The TIF establishes the base at the beginning, the last, in between the years, that base property assessment, using it to be used for the rest of the time, and then new value that's generated because of the development through TIF starts to increase that value over time, that new improvement becomes the funding to make those improvements to help sort of handle those site challenges. So we're using it in the cycle of investing in the site, using it to future tax relief on that same site. At the end of the TIF, it expires and we've got a continuing tax base that's higher than when we start working. Now, we showed you the example here from our current TIF, it's currently in Woodstock. The assessment, this would be today's tax, so it's based on the assessment, if it were today's tax rate back in 1987, so basically the assessed value back then, this wasn't the amount of money that was generated back then, but it's on today's tax rate on debt, on the debt, value that was present back then. It was 1.6 million. Again, like I mentioned, we're usually trying to use this as a conservation, to keep a value, keep a area that is declining in value, people can decline even more. That base actually did decline over time, so $100,000 of value was lost during the last 20 years. The new properties, which is primarily the Woodstock Station, the movie theater downtown, all of over a couple of the priority projects that have been created with new value, those generated approximately $67,000, that's approximately the amount that the TIF is generating today. So after the TIF, that full $2 million value will be returned to the tax base. A portion of that will be returned in the short term as we transition some of the property moves to the new TIF. About that approximately of the value of the current TIF will be transitioned to the new TIF, and the other, that would be seen this year, the other forecast to be in two more years when the full TIF expires. Where are those funds being spent? Approximately half of that has been sent on the, what we call the Dykap site of the Woodstock Station, cleaning up that site, demolishing the old factory that was there. I'll show you a picture of that, Mr. Seck. A lot of the other ones, a lot of the other funding is going to the downtown streets, the streets, the facades, and some of the businesses downtown, they have a grant program that helps them pay for facade improvements, and then also a portion of that is from the old courthouse, in just the last few years, just to stabilize that key building in our downtown square. Here's an example of the Dykap site, in that media, that's the Arrow Road, what it looked like, that was a large abandoned factory, right in the middle of downtown. This is exactly the type of key example where TIF is most productive. You believe that if it were not for the TIF, that factory would still be there. It's the kind of site that no private dollar would have tackled otherwise. You can't move, demolish that, and picture all the renovation that would have been necessary on that site and then still make a dollar a day as a bill. So it's exactly this kind of project that TIF is going to go for, and then today we see that in 2018. Most of the vacant ground here is intended to be returned to the TIF, but the homes that have been built there, which are good value homes, those we intend to roll off the TIF this year as we, oh no, those we, those we can change in the TIF in two more years. The, does TIF mean automatic property tax increase? No, it doesn't, it's not an actual tax itself. We feel that actually the tax could be in the tax base, since you're taking on expensive projects like this. Dykap site, only with the money that's generated within the district rather than the money that you have to have been given from the entire city, you have to use something like this. The property taxes, well, it doesn't go up because of TIF, but it's also not, sometimes we use the phrase freeze, but it's not actually freeze. Properties within the TIF will still go up and down in value, just like properties in rest of town. There's no tax break that gets given, nor any extra taxes, because of their inclusion in TIF. Why do you need one? Mayor kind of touched on this a little bit with 9/11, we didn't have a TIF just a couple years after the TIF was created, and then also the recession in 2008 beyond, we feel that just this TIF hasn't really had the chance with the market conditions to do all that it was intended to do. We look to do quite a bit, but not everything that it was supposed to. So there are a few key sites that we still feel like need some help. If you look on the left side, that includes some of the ones that, some of the major projects that are contributing to the current TIF value, that's the Woodstock Station, the apartments and condos that were built up on Madison Street up there, including the Armory, Woodstock Theater itself, the Home State Bank renovation, the old post office, and a couple of offices that was on the Capitol and Mary Street, because those were, that's where, those are the kind of top 10 highest property tax generating facilities that we look at today, based on the value increase that's been occurring over the past 20 years. If you look at the right side, those are the ones that we still, we feel like need to be accomplished when we look at the TIF, and what it accomplished and what it did not quite get. Woodstock Station, finishing that development is the number one, but also the Lumber Yard and the Aurora Campus, which needs some investment, and then the courthouse still, are ones that we'd like to continue to see that TIF tool, economic model tool, be available for these developments. So what we did is we chose the territory of the district, we started with those four, first four sites that are still part of the old TIF, that are not quite there, and then we started looking nearby, what are the other sites that might benefit from this type of redevelopment, looking at older facilities, sites that are either contaminated or somehow not easy to develop, which again is the reason TIF is used. And then we also had to use some sources in between some of those sites just to make sure that the entire district is continuous. So we started with the gamut of the one that I showed you, we included Armory Public Works Yard as a potential future development site. Jet Street, that whole corridor, as you may have observed, is kind of outdated, small warehouses that are really not contributing to that area anymore, they're more than that, I think, the area down. And getting up to 47, this is definitely the part of 47 that we feel is struggling, we have the WISEX that was then shop trash and is now closed again, the bots, you know, not a rarity of the reason that bots seem to move right now, but when they do, or if they do in the next 20 years, it's going to be some environmental challenges on that site, if we want to ever rebuild that. One that's not on here, but maybe you have got a letter this week from Ace Hardware, they're closing, that's going to be a building that's going to need to be rebuilt, it's an overbuilding, so that's going to be a challenge over the next few years, and that can see that. So what we did is we looked at these key sites and then we had to connect them with a particular shape. You see the kind of the hook over the top, it kind of You see the kind of hook over the top, that tends to recite in the left. That's because we needed, that is present because we needed to have the old TIP that remains also still contiguous to itself. So that kind of S curve in the middle of the downtown, that's the old TIP that's still present in the middle of the old, of new, and they're going to overlap for two years. You can't actually overlap as a specific parcel in both. So we reserve the opportunity to view the other parcels of the old TIP. If you go back to the, this map will show value, with the exception of the courthouse itself and the Woodstock Station site, all of these other ones that are generating value are all included in old TIP and not taken that value with the new TIP. It's not really necessary anymore. Those sites are already developed, we've already seen the benefit, and it's time to release those back to the rest of the tax base at the end of the TIP. Going farther south on forty-seven, we mostly look at the west side of forty-seven, again, where you've got some older buildings, some vacant parcels, challenged sites. You know, you've got the, what we call the old dominant site, that's all the vacant parcels that have been made for how long, twenty, fifteen years? The other one is, I know it's at least fifteen years, just south of the railroad castle. There would be, I think, it's, we're working with the last tenant there, but they've been in a new location about fifteen years. So that's one that's, again, is a challenging site, there's a lot of creative problems there. I know they're talking about the owner there, that's why they need most of these, the building kept flooding. So again, that's the kind of challenges we can cover the rest of the TIP. At that point, it roots out down Lake Street, picking up a lot of our industrial areas on Lake here fourteen. This is where we feel we can really invest in some of those industrial properties, bring us up to date. One in particular is the former solar plant. It's our largest vacant building right now, one hundred eighty-seven thousand square feet. Talking to several prospects, and they've been looking at that building, they just think that it's too old and too outdated right now. It was built in ninety-four. There's a lot of other options in the region that are newer than that, for people to get into. So we feel like we can move that building if we have some assistance to help to go update the systems and particularly the roof on that building, get some TIP assistance. There's also two vacant parcels around that hundred fourteen quarter. We did go across the street, you know, you're seeing where the new Starbucks is being built. Now, again, we did feel like that would really meet about four clauses, regarding development occurring, don't need to extend the TIP where those developments are occurring. We're just looking at those sites that are challenged enough that we're not seeing development occur. So that's the entire thing. I believe we, I think we have to pass a map out last time you're here as well. The, so why is it so much larger? We're trying to include more than just downtown, we're trying to get into some of the commercial and industrial areas down, really focus on that job creation and economy creating areas of the community. Tracking that development is hard, it's a very competitive market right now, we should have one in that area. All of our neighboring communities are using TIP, especially in this label. So, and then there are some built areas, you know, the building's going to be some data check. How are we going to help the school district not to suffer from this? Like I mentioned, we are primarily, the primary reason for this is commercial and industrial development, it doesn't directly affect kids, they're just damaged the community, they're not directly to those sites. There are a couple residential sites that we looked at, and we did talk about that last time you were here, and we have to continue to answer questions on there. We believe that's primarily a transitional area to development for either you and the young families or we, older families and youngsters. So we're still studying that, we're still talking, moving, but we do, we don't feel like it's going to be a lot of actual street generation for those areas. And by the way, there's several ways that the actual revenues that are generated by the TIP can be shared with schools. There are various formulas, you can say, Bob, how many, how much is supposed to be shared with the school district when new kids are generated that are residing in the TIP? We can use, TIP funding can be with facility costs, in particular in this TIP, it doesn't include play school. So the play building could be a future recipient of funding from this TIP. And then also workforce training programs, specifically with jobs that are in those industrial areas that are in the TIP, those, if we're promoting workforce programs here at the school that are preparing kids to take jobs in those industries that are present in the TIP district, we can equip that TIP money towards those training programs here. How do we know that these projects are being vetted properly? Everything, there's no shortcuts because of this TIP process, everything still has to, planning conditions, still has to have the city council, historic preservation, all the processes that we have in place. These areas are designed, again, is unconsciously expired. Once the obligations for the TIP are paid off, we can have that roll off in the TIP, if possible. Sometimes because of the contiguous nature of it, we can't try to do that. Who oversees the management? It's primarily the three of us, Roscoe, Hall, and I. We will also have a joint review board that represents the issues for taxing bodies that are affected by the district. So you're a board that have a representative. And then we also have regular reports to have the public to say to show the management is occurring. It's actually, you have a calendar now of the next events that are going on. We'd love to see you out there at these events. A lot of, well, the ones that are labeled public outreach, we've already passed number one, number two, number three. Those are not mandatory meetings for the TIP process, those are just outreach, we'd like to make the information about the TIP available to the community and have people help understand a little bit more about this one on. The other ones to see are required, the joint review board, the public hearing in November. And then we anticipate bringing this to our city council, getting that approval in January fifteenth on that third Tuesday at the end of the day. Getting updates on the TIP, our website will continue to have updates on the process, there's a link that shows some of these materials, I've created a link in Q and A, or an EFP on that. And then the, all of the residents, proprietors, were already mailed, after the first meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, they were mailed, an invitation to come to that, many of them did. And then the next one, the public hearing, it's not just the residents and property managers, for all residents within another seven hundred and fifty feet of that boundary. So it's going to be quite a mail on that next one. So just the official notices that go out, there's also interested parties registered, anybody who wants to also receive that same notification can register for that. That's just available at the court's office at Seattle. And then again, if you have any questions, my phone will be mailed here as well and answered. So back to quiz, we first to hear, but we are available now for questions.
Certainly wanted to be respectful of your time tonight because we know that you have many other items in this district. And certainly, there's just three things I want to point out. This is an important opportunity that is available as a tool, as Garrett, a limited to municipal policies, news of government, for economic development. Economic development is an important context within any community or local unit of government for one very important reason, for us. I think we all know that our residents are concerned about increasing and high property taxes. And so we've all been challenged to try to keep our property taxes down to the extent that we possibly can. And we have the opportunity to increase economic development in business and industry. That's a way of bringing new revenue into the municipality. If we bring new revenue into the municipality, that helps us to offset property taxes. And so, as in most things in life, and certainly as we look to government at all levels, one of the most important things is you can emphasize the balance. And so that is an important area of opportunity for us to balance our revenue sources, manage our property taxes, while at the same time increasing revenues from business and industry. It is a competitive marketplace, and as Garrett indicated to you, other communities, most other communities do engage TIP districts as an important resource tool, and we are looking at it for that purpose. Second thing that's important to consider is certainly that as we look to the partners within the process, and that's what we believe all units of local government are, is a partnership. As we look to other partners, it has come upon us as a city to make sure that we are cognizant of and understand the needs, interests, and concerns that all units of government have. And so it's important for us to engage with the school district, as well as by a rescue district, as well as the library district, as well as the county, all of them, to ensure that we are addressing those concerns and considerations. So we should bear with us for just a bit longer, I'm going to ask Roscoe to come on up here, and he's going to talk just a little bit about the more direct impact that TIP district in terms of process and procedure has on other units of local government. And I'm surprising him with this because he really did know this was going to be this stuff. I kind of like to do that occasionally, so here we are. Roscoe.
Thank you, Mayor. I always appreciate a good surprise. So, thank you very much, we really appreciate the time for you in collaboration. We have close relationship with the district, it's so very important to the city overall. So in regards to the TIP itself, I heard a lot of information already, so I'm not going to go too into it about that. But I will just sit down a couple of key things, and I will answer the mayor's questions. So first and foremost, I think you've seen the proof of the power of the TIP with what happened at the DICAS site, I know Derek talked about that in his presentation. I can assure you, from my background, that the quality of construction and the homes that were actually constructed on there, those ten minutes would not be there if it was not the effect of the city having that. The actual marketplace would not support that level of construction on that site without the city using a TIP in order for that to happen going forward. So I would say, not only will this help with development, this will help us improve the development that we can bring in this community, this will help improve the levels of residential quality we can bring in this community. And at the end of the day, this will significantly improve the tax base that we can use to help support the district through the board. In regards to the actual process for the TIP, as you're all aware, this is a decision that is based by the city council, but they are going to have to go through a legal process in order to make that determination. We are in the process of conducting the studies, we can share the information with the district when it becomes available to us, that you can analyze it, you can provide us with your thoughts and opinions. And then, yes, any questions you want throughout the process, we can keep you as fully informed as possible. We do have a couple more public hearings that we are going to require to go through. We will have a joint review board that will have to conduct this part act. The district will be invited to attend that meeting, provide their comments, to also provide a vote, yes or no, whether they're in favor of the TIP, whether they oppose the TIP, or if you even have a standing, if you want to connect with legislature to vote for the TIP. At the end of the day, it will ultimately be the council's decision about whether it particularly move forward or not. The impact legally on the city of this part of the decision, counting the joint review board. If the joint review board supports the TIP, and that just takes a majority vote, then the city council can implement the TIP with just a simple majority vote. However, if the joint review board opposes the TIP, the city can still move forward, and I'll be surprised when it's on that hundred percent positive. I think it's a three-fifths majority, three-fifths, three-fifths majority required by the council in order to pass that act, so it raises the vote conceders. We are here to answer any question you have, and if you don't have the information today, I'm sure we will provide it back to Dr. Long and provide the information for you. There are certain things we're still waiting for our own consultants with some study information that will cast on to the district and the associates. So thank you again for your time. If you have any questions, we'll play into the chat.
Any questions if you want to come and ask us tonight?
Thank you. A few months ago, we agreed to participate in the enterprise zone. Why is that not enough at this time? And what do you need to drop the TIP on top of it, instead of just working through that process person?
Sure. The enterprise zone is definitely, it adds value, there's no doubt to the process. It does provide some taxing segments to a business. We're very big fans of the enterprise zone, because a lot of those taxing segments actually come at the same time, they don't necessarily come at a city level. But it's not enough to deal with the cleanup issues, it's not enough in many cases to deal with challenging sites. We need to have a TIP district in order to move forward. Many of the communities that are able to offer enterprise zones also have TIPs as part of this. This is a, unfortunately, in today's time, TIP has become a common economic development tool in order for you to be able to properly develop certain sites. We can talk to many developers, and one of the questions we'll talk about with this site is, is it in the TIP right now? And the second question is, how much money is the TIP having? Because for instance, as was indicated earlier by both the mayor and the director Anderson, the city's current TIP only has two years, that's almost no economic power at all to help influence or to address a challenging segment going forward. So TIP just provides a tremendous amount of more power, more financial power to help with developing a site, the enterprise zone.
Any questions?
I agree. Is the, if someone comes into a TIP district and says, propose hospital development in the TIP district, we want to build a TIP district, but all we're going to do is do that if we can have the use of TIP funds for whatever the purpose of making. Is the city required then to expend funds in response to their request, or if the city say no, not at all?
Well, I don't necessarily think the city's required. A good city will probably make them have to prove it up, one way or the other, that this challenge exists around the site, or it will have a history in its own files that it could have to show. As Garrett indicated, we know there's a lot of flooding on the site, we know there's going to be drainage issues, it's right there. So while the question seems pretty direct and simple, unfortunately, it's a little more complex. And it kind of depends on which specific site you're talking about, what's the specific issue with the site, and what information do you currently have that supports that theory about that site as a change?
Assuming you have all the supporting meets other criteria, are you required then to expend TIP funds to support the development?
No, that's still, sorry, that's still a decision of the mayor and the city council to decide whether we enter through development or not, and what is the magnitude of that incentive to help with it.
Right, so trying to understand that the existence of property within the TIP district cannot supersede planning parks, they still have to go through the normal review process, and as a normal review process, the city is probably has the right to say, that part of it is not reviewed.
Let's get back to that second question. Assuming that they need all the criteria, let's assume somebody comes in and says, here is a location, it needs all, we want to build seventy-five house, people have the goals there, and it needs all the requirements, and there's no zoning that has to be done or anything along those lines. Are they then entitled to build within the TIP?
They're entitled to build inside the TIP district, but under no obligation is the city required to give out any type of incentive.
True.
If it's not the right fit for the city, or it doesn't need a incentive, but for test, then it would not be an incentive.
Just to clarify that, though, to our concern, I've had, I knew students to the district, there's a limited compensation model, if the city provides money, who provides it for the TIP when we get that, if they don't, the TIP, they can't by law reimburse us for those students. That's actually a worse case.
It's a much more complicated. All we could do then is create a possible apparent surplus in the TIP, but then it could spread out against all testing, so it gives a percentage. That's the only avenue to the TIP in which to try to find a way to reverse the situation there. I would tell you, we have a lot of properties in here that are zone residential, so it still requires zoning change in order for them to be able to put in residential units. The ones that are zone residential already, I believe Superintendent's aware of, we've talked about those particular properties. Fortunately, some of those properties have the earliest interest in seeing them developed. It's not surprising that I guess has a lot of interest in it, but we don't have a lot of official properties beyond that.
That's part of the partnership, though, that we're hoping to be able to develop most explicitly, so that if you all have concerns about particular parcels within the district and the residential impact, single-family residential impact, we want to have that dialogue and conversation as we proceed through the process prior to the consideration process. That's a very important element, and we acknowledge and we understand your responsibilities and your success concerns.
Karen, do you have a split fault figure on, on what we need to expect out of the development for students?
Number of students, you might know better how many, how many students on a household basis, or an average?
I know you look at that, and Karen, you're different.
We're probably looking at a hundred and sixty, hundred and eighty max units, but how many of those would have? The ones that are the apartments on the old lumberyard site, they tend to be mostly the ones that are apartments that are small or not, they're intended for, for, you know, for commuter, for commuters, and now they're really intended for families, so all of those units. And the other ones on the Woodstock Station, they're, we talked about it, it's just three plus, where these are the houses. So hundred and sixty, hundred and eighty units, but it's really hard to tell how many students maybe have.
I would also add a few, if I'm correct, from long years, the district, as well as city and other departments, lobby, building, and faculty, and working out, they're sort of doing that, people might develop, and that's funding as well. You don't really, you can't.
Certainly, we'll address any other questions or comments, but just one final thing that I guess I would like to say is that, and our job as city council, and I presume, maybe I shouldn't, but I presume for you all as well, is that as you're making decisions of this mag- of this magnitude, one of the hardest things to do is to make those decisions in today's environment, and yet you're trying to plan for the future. So you're trying to make the best possible decision that you can today, knowing full well this has a future impact. In our consideration, economic development falls squarely in that particular arena, because you're trying to invest in future economic development growth, which is going to bring in revenues that will accommodate the needs of units of government, including the school district, but it's a hard thing to do to predict what the expected outcome of that is going to be as well. Our intent here, our hope here, is that through economic development in these retail industrial areas, and with specific emphasis upon housing around downtown, the square area that's going to be attracted to downsizers and to millennials who are not as inclined, I have to be real careful with choice of words there, but not as inclined to have children coming into the school district, but yet that's going to help to increase the revenue and their economic dynamic of the downtown area and the economic condition in the future. We want to be mindful of all the impact, but that's the intent, and that's the hope, and that's the vision, if you will, of this particular type of consideration for a new, more broadly defined TIP district. Again, it's a difficult thing for us all to do, but that is our intent, that's our hope, and with your assistance, as we review, we believe that we can make a better decision ultimately, as we approach that January 15 intent area for decision.
I have a question. You may be confused, but so, any increase in assessed value over the 2020 period of all properties on the TIP district, not just the improved properties, any of that increased then does not become available to us as the acting body, because the city would stop it, right, as opposed to the TIP district as our district? We're taking a huge amount of property, and of all those properties, and that's a lot of money, that potential tax, so then that would cause us to have to raise our assessment, our ROB, our EBITDA.
I understand the statement, the one aspect that you have to understand is that some of those have already been reduced in EAB as a result of the economic downturn, or as a result of some deterioration. And so, we're already, in some instances, below what that spanned line was, through the opportunity for a TIP district to be able to raise the development of those properties, raise the value of those properties, therefore increase again those individual properties that are already in, well, their property, back to a more contributing level of the TIP.
Right, and we won't have any access to that for the 2020 period, correct?
So the part you talked about isn't exactly correct. As a district, the way the tax levy is, is you get pizza each year, you just, you can raise that up. The part you get is not the new growth, so essentially, you get to take your value that the district has right now, and raise it by pizza. The district actually gets the same amount of money, what is getting farmed over is the separate potter from your goal.
Yeah, it's going to waste taxes off. That's what the mayor talks about originally.
It does, it does, it's unfortunate.
If we take the same amount, it's distributed among the less people, that's going to raise the tax rate.
That is 100% correct, yes, that's right. So the district receives the same amount of money, but the bad side is it gets spread along with the rest of the district to make up the tax. But as you saw too, by the numbers we showed you, the brand 2008 is in there influencing those numbers. The district as a whole went down, you take out the problems that influence the TIP. So, it's not guaranteed, the reason cities impose TIPs, and the reason they put them in place, is because they're seeing that negative decline in the community, with challenging properties that are heading wrong direction. And this is the best avenue in which we can go ahead and assist with properties, as the TIP is related to called entire properties, we can go ahead and go in here and revitalize the properties, so that they have much more value, so when we pass them back to the taxi district, they're generating that much more profit base going forward. So, it's, the meaning is viewed as, is it stopping a negative cycle? Because that's what we're choosing, there is a, we see a negative cycle. The report we put there already shows three out of five years, the properties we're looking at assume a negative decline in the negative, and we're not talking 2008, now we're all going back to 2014, 2013, something in that nature. So, this is still showing the decline here, and that's why we chose to use properties and implement the TIP, because we know it's going to create a positive cycle, we're hoping it's going to create a positive.
And that, absolutely true, and the one thing we all agree on, though, is an influx of students is going to have, you know, which we don't convert, the mayor said, best intentions from everyone involved, that's the variable we can't control, we don't know that, you know, just so we're all clear, right? A new student, and a new development coming in, we have a limited opportunity, the city's actually obligated to put it, it's a small one. So after that, without an outside agreement, they can't give us any additional money, you know, miniature, talking about artificial costs, right? Staff, buses, things of that nature, which are going to go up. That's our, as administrative team, that's the biggest concern, we want to make sure, this thing's been very transparent.
The Act allows you to reverse, but if you get too many kids coming out of there, that act will go.
Can you give to, you're.
Say that again.
I thought, if I understand the Act, and if I understand it, you can go up to 40%, so if you only get one or two.
It doesn't go to 40%. It depends on the funding level, 1995, 1996, we're below foundation level.
And to give an example, I mean, and you talked about best intentions, and I think the concern is that, we've talked about the concern, and I think you're aware of what our concerns are, and we've raised them several times, but you talked about 160 units with one-bedroom units, and that's fine if it fills up with single people, but if it fills up with single parents, that's 160 students, and somehow we have to find out how to recover it. I'm not saying we'll fill up 160, but if it fills up four, that's 40 more students, and that's two teachers we have to hire, plus we have to figure another thing out to connect, and that's what we're really concerned about. We've expressed this to you, and I think you're aware of it, and we've talked about ways that it might be a possibility of how to reduce.
And that's, that's actually what we hope will take place, is that we will continue to jointly work through those types of projections, so that we can better understand the impact, and then we can consider how we might be able to manage that impact. So, no question about the fact that that is understandably your most important consideration and concern, and we again want to continue to be strong and collaborative partners as we address those concerns and plan for that.
So, does anyone else have any questions or comments, or anything else they'd like to express to, gentlemen, come and talk to us.
Again, thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate it.
So our timeframe is on this, is the joint review meeting is on October 10. We have two meetings before then, and we discuss our support of the TIP, and that's, this TIP will be on the agenda at all times for discussion during the next two meetings, so that we can at least discuss it. If you have other questions, express it to Dr. Wong, express it to any gentleman here, so you can do your own research, and we will address it in turn prior to October 10, so we can come in with some sort of discussion.
Thank you all, thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. So the board, you want to just move to the discussion in the next, in the next two agendas?
Well, we're discussing connecting, and we're going to direct it forward.
It can be you.
Okay. So, think about it, be ready to discuss, please. All right. Nothing else on TIP, we'll move on to the monitoring.
Sorry, excuse the quiet, we're ready to back again tonight, see if there are any comments, questions, or proposed changes by the board, I don't worry about your approval as a number, like good for.
I think everything's gone pretty clear and direct, so I really don't have any issues hanging.
Okay, with a couple of the main issues that the board wanted to address, especially we have had, is the parent engagement component, which we'll speak about, future board meetings, facilities that are engaging in current one. Continue survey and engagement of our stakeholders, students, and parents.
Does there any, any comments or anything? We got the word on this, and I mean.
Yep, that's the intent, we'll bring back your approval.
So, if you do have concerns or changes, we need you here, you need to express them before the next board meeting, so that we can be a viable version of the problem available for, we're working at the final decision body. All right, if there's anything else on that, then we'll move on to the approval of insurance committee recommendations. Do your business.
Okay, our insurance committee met on August 20th. The committee is made up of administration, staff members from each of the four bargaining groups, and Dr. Schinner is our board representative. Also present at that meeting was Dave O'Hara from the Gordon Group, who has been for many years our district's insurance consultant. We have three items on our agenda, and that was to look at our reinsurance plan, our dental plan, and our vision plan. In each case, what we did is Mr. O'Hara made a report on our current performance of our plans, we looked at data concerning that, and then he looked, explained all the competitive bids he received on these renewals. He then made a recommendation, and in each case, the committee then voted unanimously to accept his recommendation and bring that to the board. Those recommendations are that we have a renewal of our reinsurance plan with Optum, we have a renewal with our dental plan with Delta Dental, and a renewal of our contract with VSP for District's Vision Plan.
Anybody have questions or comments to bring in? If not, there's a suggested motion, page 500, we'll throw it over and roll it.
Move to renew a contract with Optum for the district's reinsurance plan effective October 1st, 2018, renew a contract with Delta Dental for the district's dental coverage effective January 1st, 2019, and approve the renewal of a contract with VSP for the district's vision coverage effective January 1st, 2019.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Grill, and seconded by Mr. Freese, roll call, please.
Mr. Borlitz?
Yes.
Mr. Freese?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Mr. E.
Mr. Schinner?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Homel?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, and the next is our retail electric supplier agreement.
So, the last contract that was worked through with New York Energy will start to be in coverage December 2019 through December 2020, and the rate that we locked in at that time is just over $0.02 per kilowatt hour. This fix pricing should save the district about $285,000 annually, comparing that to the comp ad rate, which is about $0.06 per kilowatt hour. Right now, the district's utility consultants is recommending that we look at locking-in prices for the period of December 2020 through December 2022. And then she recommended that because it's historically low, and she feels it's time is right to lock in rates. Locking-in rates for 2022 would protect our own budget by another about $70,000, something hundred dollars. As we've done in the past, she's looking for us to set a trigger price of just below $0.0295 per kilowatt hour, for 100% of our electricity needs. And when that price reaches, when the market reaches that price point, we'll lock in, because like I said, as many times, electricity is traded on the old market, we, we would allow me to sign the contract because it occurred in the same time. Today, she looked at the rate, and it was $0.02973, so a little bit higher than the target, but this is the method that we've been using for several years, and I'm going to look at it.
Any questions for Lisa?
We've been using her, how many years has she been on?
10.
She hasn't been on before. Pretty confident.
I feel very confident in her abilities, and she knows the market, and after the asset market very well, and she's very conservative, but also wants us to do best with our, and when we tell the prices, we can check our budget.
We set the trigger low, and if it doesn't meet that low, I will lock.
Right.
Any other comments? If not, there's a suggested motion on page 60 of your materials, roll it over.
Move to approve a retail electric supplier agreement with Mid-American Energy for the period covering December 2020 through December 2022 at a trigger price point of $2.95 per kilowatt hour or less. Chief Financial Officer is authorized to sign such agreement.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Frey, seconded by Mr. Homel, roll call, please.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Homel?
Yes.
Mr. Schinner?
Yes.
Mr. Borlitz?
Yes.
Mr. Freese?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
All right, okay, that concludes our new business. Next item on our agenda is our committee reports. Have any committees had since our last board meeting? Any committees doing a report? A note for the report, so then we're going to, next thing is our close session, I'll need you one to make the motion as stated on your agenda.
Move to a closed session for the purpose of litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, and the appointment to employment compensation, discipline performance, or dismissal, dismissal of specific employees of the district.
Motion, go ahead, second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Borlitz, seconded by Mr. Homel, roll call, please.
Mr. Borlitz?
Yes.
Mr. Homel?
Yes.
Mr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Schinner?
Yes.
Mr. Freese?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Garrett pulls up.